The blue papers.
We're live, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting in the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which included a two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We are live and remote today. But join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands.
My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Stady.
Present, sir.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Um. Next, item number three on our agenda is call for executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
Commissioner Stady.
We go to executive session. So we can master in law Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one, eighty-three. Discuss strategy with respect to bargaining or litigation. With open meeting, the detrimental effect on litigating permission of a party. And if she has some.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a roll. I'm sorry. To go into executive session, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shea is yes. We're in executive session. We will. I have declared. We need an executive session today, and we will be returning to complete our regular agenda after the um, number minutes of executive, of minutes of last week's meeting, and then go right to the Budget Commission if you don't mind.
Okay. Are we in session right now?
We are. Uh, commissioners, I'll leave the department to set the table also.
Where's my book? Where's my book? Huh? Where's my book? My book?
Right there.
But it doesn't have a bulldog. Yeah, I have a bulldog going on.
I have the bulldog here. I'll bring it down.
Oh, okay. No, no, I didn't know if I. What's the, what would use this book here, Billy? I don't care.
Yes, that's correct.
Use this book here?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Thank you. I misunderstood.
I'll be right here if you have any questions.
Okay, let's let the public in.
Go ahead.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Carl.
Hello, Commissioner.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Hello, Sam.
Commissioners.
Sean, how you doing?
You're going to be first, Sam, so why don't you go ahead?
Shall I assume the position?
Okay, we're back on the record on our regularly scheduled meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Commissioner. Item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of February twelfth.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval. That presented.
The motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Number five of appointments, we have three appointments today with various department heads relative to budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We're going to hear today from CIO Sam Evans. Sam Evans, yeah. Walston Recreation Facility, Paul Minor, and John McGowan, my maintenance department. If there's no objection, first up in the seat here today, um.
Damon.
Is is Sam Evans, CIO. Good afternoon, Sam.
How you doing, Commissioners? Thanks for the time.
We're working with your budget as you presented us in this book.
Yep, um. Yes, I'm sure you are very lucky today.
Today's our lucky day.
Hopefully you can.
Where's that? I may say this at the beginning. We're sticking to our calendar. We did it last year. We're going to stick to it this year, so and everything can be on the table within the session of the budget.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume too, just to set the tone. We're just getting this today.
Correct.
This is just an easy, once over lightly, we ask questions.
Take it under consideration.
We visit later.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So what's gonna go and let the table close, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's go.
So whether or not you had a chance to read the cover letter, that kind of goes over everything, and then in the spreadsheet, so I make some callouts there for you to see basically what was covered in the cover letter, so. Couldn't be anything surprising between the two pieces of information. The um, high level is that I managed to identify several areas where we could cut some money out of last year's expenses, even with uh, trying to anticipate where vendors would increase their prices, which I think in my third budget this time, I can more accurately predict where vend, which vendors put in price increases. I can never do that fully because you don't know what kind of years companies have had, but even with a ten to twelve percent or ten to fifteen percent increase for most vendors, I was still able to cut out about forty-five thousand dollars in overall expenses, although there are some areas where you'll see expenses have gone up in places. Um. I have taken out a bunch of money for consulting slash temporary staff, uh, but I have, and we'll talk about this in a moment, put in a new position that I'm requesting. You and the director will be able to discuss whether or not you can afford that this year. I know when I put in a salary, that's only some part of the costs. There are all kinds of indirect costs with benefits, et cetera, which you'll have to consider. If it can't be done this year, again, we'll talk about it in a moment. I understand that, and what I've got in uh, my notes in the cover letter, if you can't put in the whole salary, if you can consider putting some of that money back into my consulting or professional contracting areas, that would be uh, very favorably looked upon, and that's we'll get right to that position immediately. The position I stuck in there is for a network administrator slash cybersecurity administrator. Um, this is modeled after what the town of Wellesley did in twenty twenty-three. They didn't go out just for a cybersecurity professional. They went out for someone who is going to be mostly cybersecurity, but also help out with network administration. So given what the incident that we had earlier in the year and the needs of the agricultural school, um, they had a situation with one piece of their software. It didn't have anything to do with them. It's a piece of software they use, but whenever it happens, there's things you have to consider. Uh, we thought if we have a position that will work for us, which includes our two locations and the golf course, and also help out at the school, it would be something that would be useful. So you'll see that in my group one costs. Again, you can consider it uh, with the director, and if it can't be done this year, then some of that money, if you can cut it out, stick it somewhere else, that we can have somebody come in and help us with some cybersecurity things. When we were looking at how do we address this? Strangely, if you go out for what they call a virtual cybersecurity type person, the cost of having somebody come in and uh, spend X number of weeks looking at your stuff and then doing it, it's almost as much as a full-time person. We already have, I think we discussed this back when we were talking about the cybersecurity incident before. We already enroll in the federal government's um, monitoring software. They check our sites out once a month and send us reports, and we have some weekly stuff, and we've already taken advantage of the states, some of the states' free cybersecurity uh, offerings, and we do all that stuff, and what that does is it points out things that we need to do. So we're already doing that, but a person who we would hire would come in and look at all the logs and look at all the things that come in from the federal government's monitoring software. They would sit around and they would be here actively because the threats and the cybersecurity landscape changes all the time. So it's something that we should get to eventually, I think. Um, and again, it wouldn't just be for us. It would also be for the school, and there's a note on the spreadsheet. I think it's the second one that you have. Yeah, the second one shows salaries. And once you start looking at spreadsheets, that says maybe there would be a possible contribution from the school. I also, I understand that uh, we had a very brief conversation with Mark Coet about it, and I think Mark may have talked to John Wallace, but I don't, they weren't able to get to a point where they could say, yes, we could contribute to that. So again, if you take it under advisement, at the very least, that would be appreciated. As we get into non-personnel expenses, as I mentioned, I was able to reduce the temporary salaries since we didn't use them very much at all this past, this current fiscal year. Um, one of those areas I was able to take out. We had some money in the set, in temporary salaries this year for Richard Kennedy and Gary Lubin, so that they could come in and help us as we were looking at some improvements to the Brown Tech software. Uh, we didn't use them very much this year, but we believe that we might need them some next year, so cut that in half in some other areas, so you'll see some savings there. As we go into group two expenses, we had some money set aside this year for professional and technical codes, and I used very, very little of it, so I took a whole bunch out of there. Um, we get into maintenance of computer hardware and maintenance of computer software, which is really renewal stuff. I was able to take a bunch of money out of there, but we renew the IBM hardware and software, which is what Brown Tech runs on, and we do that in two or three-year chunks. So last year I didn't have to renew it, but this year I do. So while I was able to save a bunch of money in there, there are several contracts that skip years, so I, there's uh, some big bumps in there. Excuse me for a moment. Another thing that, excuse me, went up in our software renewals this year is Microsoft stuff. So one of the things that we changed after we had our cybersecurity incident earlier in the year is we moved all the folks here in this building uh, off of network software that sits on computers here into Microsoft Cloud. So to do that, we had to buy a whole bunch of licenses, and we're about to buy this year some new software to make that even more strong on the cybersecurity framework and to back up all that data, so there's going to be extra costs there. Excuse me. So that went up a little bit. Uh, but I was also able to save a bunch of money in what's called contractual expenses. You'll see those codes go down greatly. On the supply side, the group three, I took out a whole bunch of money there as well because we just hadn't been spending that much uh, this year, and that's because you guys were able to approve all my previous uh, requests in those areas for the past uh, two budgets, and so not going to need to spend a lot in there uh, in FY twenty-six. Before, I always had very little in there, so I don't need to do that, so that two thousand dollars saved there. And in capital, I had to put, bump it up a little bit. We've got, and I won't bore you too much with the details, in the server room across the street, we have this battery-intensive backup thing that's wired into the server racks, and it's from this one place, and every, I think Dan told me, five to six years, we have to replace a whole bunch of batteries in it, and it's not like these other batteries that we use in other places that are cheap, takes a whole bunch of batteries, and then it's good for five or six years, so we gotta replace that this year, so you see that bumped up a little. So that's the high-end view of everything.
You want?
It'll be in FY twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's why you'll see a bump there. So as you go through this, you'll see some other minor things. I don't want to waste your time and go over everything for you. Uh, when you go through it, if you have any questions, I'm totally available for it. Hopefully, again, you'll see in the last page of the spreadsheet, I got a whole bunch of callouts there, which will hopefully make things clear for you. And as you go through the cover letter again, you'll see a little more detail than I want over here. But in general, I think it's a you'll see that it's gone up a bump, but that's because I put in a ninety thousand dollar position, which you may end up not. So generally, I think it's a lower budget by about, will be five, fifty thousand dollars before the additional position.
We need you to put the new job.
That'll be, I talked about it in the first part of the cover letter, and then if you look at the
With the cover.
The first page that has the gridlines on it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You'll see network and cybersecurity administrator, which is the last thing under title of position. It says, it says, so you see code one hundred, permanent salary, CIO, data processing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then you'll see network and cybersecurity administrator, and for name, it says TBH to be hired.
What did you have?
Not today.
Did you not get this page?
Oh, okay. Hold on, hold on.
Like this one?
Okay.
But it's only got four of you on there.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't have that page.
Oh, you didn't get the?
No, we didn't get that.
Okay, sorry. All right.
Page. That page we need.
So there, actually, there's probably, I sent this, this is the updated one.
Yeah.
So some of the other ones.
All right.
Some of the other pages will be updated as well. So we have to get you a whole new set because my cover letter, the cover, what you've got in your binders there, don't talk about it.
All right, so bottom line, as you presented this budget today, is it, is it, is it a net increase, decrease?
It is, it is a net increase because of that.
I understand, but it's still an increase?
Yes.
How much of it increases? Fifty, forty-five thousand? If you had some drops too.
Yeah.
You have some drops, cut this, cut that, so.
Let me see what we got. It looks like it's about sixty-something more than last year. No, wait, more, because that's not, that doesn't have group one in it.
Thank you.
More.
Well, if an S, that's a factor in other. How benefit.
So maybe with the with that, if you approve that position, it goes up, let me just make sure I'm doing this. So last, the FY twenty twenty-five approved was four hundred ninety-seven thousand outside of the personnel. The twenty twenty-six requested outside of personnel is only four hundred fifty-eight thousand. So that's forty-five thousand savings, so with ninety thousand, so I think it goes up around, the entire budget is about fifty, fifty-five thousand over that, including the new position. So you take the, take the position out, it's uh, fifty thousand savings.
Are there other communities that have? Something like what you said, Wellesley.
Wellesley advertised for that.
Need to have part-time people?
Uh, I don't know. That's a good question, if they have anyone doing cybersecurity part-time, because it's hard for a cybersecurity person to come in and check everything out. They do have, up in the North Shore, they have a cybersecurity collaborative. Um, I don't know what the staffing on that is. They have this thing in cybersecurity called the Security Operations Center, which is a place that they got people watching stuff, they got software watching stuff, people um, have monitoring going on all the time, and it's, I can't remember how many towns are in that North Shore collaborative, but they may have some part-time people left.
So last question.
Yeah, sure. Take your time.
Would it be possible for this to be a part-time, should it reduce rate? Then we gradually bump it up each year.
Yeah, so that's, it's harder for me to know. Uh, the, the, the problem, if somebody comes in, eh, we'd have to cut down what they're looking at. We'd have to have a professional come in and say, yeah, it, we, you can't do everything that, that we want them to do. And you'd have to tell them, we want you to monitor the logs and make recommendations. We want you check the hardware. We want you to come in and change our firewall logs, but this position is not a full cybersecurity position. It's someone who can go around and help out too, because Mark Coet, for instance, at the school, he's doing all of the networking stuff, that whole bunch of stuff, almost all by himself. I know he has, I almost forget her name. There's another person there who helps him with uh, some of the work. She's does some database stuff, who helps with the um, uh, some of the Chromebook things, et cetera, but this would be someone who could help out, not just with cybersecurity, but the job description would be to go out as be a network administrator as well. So maybe it would be sixty percent, seventy-five percent cybersecurity, but that other percentage of it would be to go out and do uh, and, and com- networking.
Could be a possibility of a side benefit. By that I mean, by putting on a cybersecurity person, with an insurance carrier, give us perhaps a, a credit.
So that's.
There's, there's like, you know, you have a hydrant in front of your house, you got a little bit of rate, so I mean, you got a guy doing security, we didn't have it before. Would that be something we could get saving on?
We have to check with our policy. What we've did, what we've been doing the past twelve, fourteen months is actually checking off the box that they had, like multi-factor authentication, which we've done now on almost all the applications, Outlook and everything else, we've done that. So they have specific things you put in. They reduce the, your rates and all that kind of stuff. Um, I don't know if having a person in, but it couldn't hurt. We would, we would chat, we could have our agent check it out.
You'd find out about that?
Yeah. Um, it's really more that as I was mentioning, we, we we have this stuff with the federal um, cybersecurity and information security agency. They send us every month a massive thing saying, all right, we, we want you to look at these things, and then uh, we get that stuff also from the state, and we, we have to spend time going through and fixing stuff, but when you fix one thing on your website, say, or your network, you have to make sure that you didn't block out something else. So you, you have to set up a whole bunch of tests before you can put something in, so by the time you're ready, make those changes, wait, now you've got the new report. So it's, it's hard on the timeframes that we work with to make all those changes. But again, this is the first time we're putting in front of you, it's right in the budget. You can't do it. We understand.
There's a lot.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And then again, then I just, first time you're looking at it, if anything comes up, why don't you look at it, just let me know, or through the director or whatever, we'll answer whatever questions you have.
Okay, John, do you have any questions to speak?
I was in and out. I apologize, seeing that you've already addressed this, but did you discuss the possible partnership with the schools?
Yeah.
On the same.
Yes. He makes note on, on the sheet.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Possible contribution to the school.
We'll make, we'll make sure that, that you have the, yeah, exactly. It'll take some more uh, thinking and input from them. We'll make sure that you have the corrected cover sheets and um, backup stretches.
If we're going to do that, Mr. Chairman, we have to notify the school tonight, the school. Including their budget.
Look at the budget and see if they can.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I don't think John W. had a chance to do that. So I talked to Mark, and I know Mark mentioned it to him, but I didn't hear back that they weren't able to do it.
So didn't get really good views. Okay, we'll bring it up. Okay, any other questions, Commissioner?
Good. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion taken under consideration. As I said earlier, everything is to the last day of the budget subject of discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next in our book?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Thank you.
How you doing?
Now, fucker. Thanks. President's Golf Course, it's number two in our book. Letter to last dated February first.
Almost golf time, right?
Hmm. It is my pleasure to submit the fiscal twenty-six budget for Walston Recreation Facility. President's Golf Course, the following are the highlights, highlights of that budget. Um, talks about income. Temporary salaries, everything's here, and there's a backup page to it. So Carl, do you have a statement here or any words of wisdom?
I okay, um. The uh, temporary salary budget has been increased by fifteen thousand dollars. I tried to do this, this last uh, fiscal year, but um, it is not within the budget. Um. Over time salaries has been increased by five thousand. Um, we exhaust that fund each year. Um, gas and diesel fuel has been increased by two thousand dollars. Um. Household supplies and materials has been increased by five hundred. Um, fertilizing seed has been increased by three thousand dollars for bunker sand. Um, employee uniforms has been increased by one thousand dollars for pro shop uniforms. That's something we've been discussing for years. Um. Rental equipment has been decreased by ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Two green masters, the report, the lease FY twenty twenty-five, for the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents. FY twenty twenty-six will add a sand pro and a dent track layup attachment for five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Questions?
So two things are coming off. The total amount of that is fifteen thousand. Plus you decrease something else by ten, it's about twenty-five, right? Am I right?
Um.
About? On the last code, code zero zero one, two hundred?
Yeah, it's been decreased by ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
A decrease?
Yes.
A decrease. Right, and then you said two green masters coming up, the lease.
Right.
So your total, I'm looking at, would be twenty-five thousand coming out, if you add something back in.
Right. Um. No.
Right?
The fif- with fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-sixty-four is coming out, and they're adding five thousand three eighty-eight, eighty-eight. Yes, would be the difference between those two. So it's been decreased by ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay. So if you look at the first couple of items you, you presented to us, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you had some increases, and you got some decreases. Is your budget level funded, or is it overall going?
It's a lot more.
How much is it going forward?
I don't have that figured.
Okay, we get each other.
What's that question?
It's partially nineteen thousand.
Okay.
I, I have it, it's one. I'll read it nineteen.
Okay, so we're just trying to figure out where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, it's not way out of whack, but.
Okay, and the income though, um, is it based on current fees?
For the last two years.
Couple of years.
Yeah, Dan, Dan worked on that. We only had um, in the soft in the last two years, we had new software.
Yeah. So is the income trending up? Going down, staying the same?
Last year was a very good year.
Yes, yeah.
Um. That went up.
Okay. So that's the estimate. I see. That's the income estimate we're estimating for fiscal twenty-six.
Right.
Right? Okay, so based on the income and then your projected expenses, we're still going to be down about nineteen. Okay, not breaking down about twenty.
That, that delta is against last year's appropriation, not against its expected revenue. He's not an enterprise fund, so the funds he receives for revenue to one of our general.
That's right. You're right. I was looking at it different.
But no, I, reasonable approach, but basically with the uh, course runs, it's a break even. Sometimes they're a little above, total expenditures, sometimes they're a little below.
Okay.
And it's, Carl's right, Dana's projections were slightly above last year. It was a good year. Uh, so I suspect they're in a slightly favorable position, revenue to expenses, but overall against prior year appropriation, he's up about twenty grand.
Can he ask a couple of questions? So just, just, you, you've got pretty significant increases for like, you know, temporary salaries, overtime salaries. Let's take temporary, which, that's a big increase, fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Right.
So what's the reason for that?
Well, at at the end of the year, we usually get very tight in the budget.
Yeah.
And um, we're going to check lots of funds there.
Yeah, but temporary salaries is for temporary people you put on, right?
The pro shop.
So crazy question.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be better off, don't put temporary, hire someone?
Oh, no, no.
Is it seasonal people?
Yeah, pro shop is seasonal, mostly, yes.
Okay, all right. People on one.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh.
You know that long list of.
Yeah, I remember that, which I get.
Let everyone.
Three days, three weeks.
Question of those people back.
It's coming back.
Okay, temporary.
So this is the number of people you need to manage a course in the coming year, and it's you get choked.
You've got to remember, we're pretty much open, um, if it's daylight open.
Okay.
Uh, over time, okay, gas and diesel, that stuff goes up. I get the rest. Pretty much normal stuff. You know, stuff goes up. Expenses go up, life goes up. Uh, I just said about the temporary people. But that's how we can go back to business. That's all, you know, that's all. We haven't got all the budgets yet. We don't know, you know, you're, you're looking for a little more, Sam looking for more. I know Mr. McGowan probably looking for more.
No, it's not.
All right, all right, George, all right. But anyway, I'm good.
We're going to take this under advisement, and if there's any more questions, you can ask them at any point in the
John has.
But in the interest of. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna ask Carl if he put any, um, thought into modifying the, um, the hours worked with the assistant superintendent, the mechanic and the groundskeeper. This is a status quo budget. I presume each of these individuals would work thirty-seven and a half hours. We'd had a conversation several times most recently in January about through you, Carl, possibly bringing it to forty hours per week, uh, due to the overtime issues that you faced last year. I didn't know if you wanted to make your pitch to the commissioners on that plan today.
Yes, I would, um. The the full-time staff, they work thirty-seven, thirty-seven and a half hours. So if they come on a weekend or a holiday, um, the first two and a half hours get, they get paid straight time. And that's taking a, that extra day work. I had suggested that we, um, put them up to forty hours a week. Um, so they work forty hours a week, and then when they come in on Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday, they would start off making the overtime. So, so since they don't work thirty-seven and a half hours during the week.
Right.
When they come in on a weekend or a holiday, the first two and a half hours they are working, they do not get paid hour overtime. They get paid their regular, regular rate. And I just, I, I don't think that's fair to do, to do to someone that, you know, taking it, basically taking a day off and coming in to work.
So you don't bump it forward?
I would like to.
We have to take it under advisement, recently, we have some aegis from Uncle Sam. He must work forty hours before he can get in.
I thought that was something. Refresh my memory, didn't we have something like that? This would go, this came back about a few months ago.
Oh, I think we've been wrestling with longer than that, but we they gave us plenty of time, but we haven't done it yet. So we gotta do with this budget, we gotta come out of here with some, something. I know, I know the employees on that.
This budget doesn't reflect that possible money, but you would like us to look at that.
I would.
And therefore, the needed adjustment we need to make.
Yes.
Only one of them, make notes.
All right, well, in view of that.
Yeah.
In the interest of disclosure.
Yeah.
Looking at this budget. Number, Assistant Superintendent George Sullivan has given his resignation. He's gone off to the happy land of, I don't know, golf equipment, etc. George was a longtime employee. I think he started as one of his son's associates and went all the way to work, assistant superintendent. We have his, well, he's moved on, he's not here. Today I received a notice from Dana Smith, Assistant Director in Golf Pro. Says, good morning, I've submitted my resignation effective date of March seventh. Giving two weeks' notice, just a few questions from Michelle Richardson. We're gonna have to deal with this, and I know John was gonna mention it later in this report, so we're gonna be hunting. Also, an assistant director slash golf pro for one, one of another thing. I'm informed today, you can't open a golf course without a golf pro.
I don't believe we can.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I mean, so we're gonna be under a gun here. And, uh, I don't, I don't wanna tell you, you know, as soon as the other employees remain in place, so. None of those, well, those are the, the poor people. Everyone else comes under this temporary, and it's been that way for a long, long time. I don't know, it's twenty people, thirty people, but, you know, it ebbs and flows. And we're looking for a March tenth, just trying to get all this direct, give or take.
Give or take.
I suppose it's snowing that week, no? The sun's out, you know what's gonna happen. So, I, I just want, you know, the less than a month is, we've gotta keep.
Oh, we gotta get going.
And we received the second today.
Are we advertising our position?
We're, oh, the first one, we're well into interviewing.
Right.
Carl and John have interviewed, you know, some people, and I think they're making progress, as Fader said, we're making progress. And the groundskeeper guy?
I hope so, um, we have a, a good candidate coming in Friday.
All right. All right, I mean, I don't wanna jump the gun either, but, you know, this, this position has certain licenses, it has to do with the chemicals, I believe. And that's Carl's background too, so we're gonna leave that up to you. We're gonna get going, I just wanted to break it up, make it up today. All right, any other questions about the Lawson Recreation? Go ahead, John.
Uh, given, uh, Commissioner State's interest, uh, are you inclined to ask Carl to resubmit a budget reflective of those hourly changes that he just discussed?
We'll do.
Fuel, fuel, electricity. Fuel, oil, electricity. Gases, gas is the equipment, right? Fuel is the
Yeah.
trucks, so a truck. Hundred eleven thousand, hundred eleven thousand, up from eighty-eight thousand in one year. We're going in the middle at ninety-two, I don't know, I mean, there's a fixed cost, but, you know. We're gonna have to live with it, I mean, there wasn't a whole way to go. What, what is printing? What's a big binder on printing?
That, in the, in the past, was, um, the Norfolk County Classic and the, uh, the four ball. And that's also the scorecards, like.
That's fine. Okay, I don't have anything else right now, but, uh, again, we'll take a motion, take this under advisement. With notice to those points to be readdressed or addressed. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next on the list here.
One up.
Come on up, John, Peg, come on up, John, Peg. Good afternoon. I'm looking at John's memo of February fourth.
How are you?
Talking about our requested increase for fiscal year twenty-six, along with justification. John, couple of words of wisdom. And John, also is John Vignoni, Assistant Directors with us? Go.
Well.
Go ahead.
My, uh, whole reasoning for this request for an increase in accounts, what the employee is, uh, I was informed that she's making twenty-four thousand dollars less than Tara. That's, that's a pretty big sum there, I thought. And, uh, I know Tara left the school and came to work for us, at a five thousand dollar difference, okay? And I don't know, it's just, it's something I want you to look at. And you know, make, make your recommendation. And as far as I, I just thought, you know, twenty-four thousand dollar difference in pay for the same position as the law. It's up to you.
Peg, you're not in the union, John's on the union, and you're not in the union, everyone else in the Everyone else in the
Everyone else is, yeah.
Okay.
For the rubbish removal, uh, that's basically an, an increase because of the and, uh, you know, these increases here are justifiable because elevator repairs are going up. They're going up. Everything's going. Test control, it went up eight hundred. And the employee uniforms is by contract, I believe. It was eleven hundred dollars difference there. And the planning supplies, that goes up every year, that's I mean, we, we're supposed to be putting it out for bid, all these different supplies, and, uh, I know that it wasn't being done the last couple of years, it's been, you know, we've had contracts with certain people with certain items, but you know, there's other stuff on there that we, we grabbed from Home Depot. Our lows, which is, I think is probably more expensive. That's something we should look at, getting a contract with the different supplies that we, you know, like Lysol spray, the disinfectant, stuff like that. Bleach soap, everything, everything's, uh, I know we have a a contract with Next Gen. They supply a lot of our stuff, but there's other stuff that's, that we need to get. That's why that increase of four thousand is required. The payroll is, we've changed that because of the ongoing negotiations that you have with the union, we've added in that stuff, didn't we?
Well, that, that was just leveled because they have, they're not, they're not done with.
So everything else is level funded, except for a few things here, I think that we, uh, increased sewer, and water and sewer taxes by, uh, five thousand.
Yeah, so that's the water and sewer tax in each of your board buildings?
No, that's for each one, no, that's for all of them.
Yeah, but yeah, but each, I mean, different towns.
Yes.
Quincy Brookline, Stoughton, and Deau.
Right.
And there's no, we, I didn't realize we paid water, well, you gotta pay for the water.
The sewer tax.
Yeah.
About sixty-three thousand.
Really?
And they know those.
Five percent increase, or five point something increase coming.
Yeah.
We don't. Right? I mean, it's five percent?
Five percent is what the, yeah, it is, what Dedham is going up, at least.
Okay.
And then there's, uh, most, usually
Go ahead.
We only go level funding for this, uh, budget every year. If you look at it, you'll see that it's basically been the same for the last three or four years. I try, I try to keep it down as much as I can. But certain circumstances, uh, you know, you're gonna be getting you know, for contractual services, we'd have to get a little more money because you charge a little all these contractors, they charge a little more now every year. And then you have, uh, elevator repair guy, already went through that. These are just basic increases that we need. The way, the way of the world right now, I think. Everybody's going up.
Go ahead.
I, I, I'm confused on, uh, the very first item. It says requested increase accounts for employee annual step. There's no number, what number are we looking at? There's no, I have no number on it.
I don't either.
Well, that's on the, it's on the spreadsheet that's attached to it.
It is?
Yeah.
Is this on first, is this on Margaret's? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Right.
On the spreadsheet, you'll see, it doesn't say Margaret, it says Tara.
No, it says Margaret. Did you just say Tara?
Yes, take a look.
Yeah, that's why, there you go.
I mean, I already crossed it out.
Screwed up. No, I have John, Tara, John, and eliminate. That's why I have, I have no clue.
The new sheet, all right, okay.
So Commissioners, the data that departments are asked to input into the Tyler system, the Tyler data comes in as raw format, and that's what you see at the back of this particular budget.
Okay.
We, uh, we utilize
Thank you.
We utilize a dump of that data into Excel, into a format that the Abraham's Group has provided us.
Okay.
So with respect to this position for Tara DePonzo, um, this is an old format that has not been updated with the new data that's coming in. No, I have, I have, I'm just explaining why they have
Okay, that's fine, I
All right. So.
Question.
Okay.
And, does that answer your question?
Well, so now you're going currently
So Margaret's the right name?
Yep.
But now they have the right name?
If we go to the sheet of the, the union employees, starting with Robert Perry and going down the vacant, one, two, three.
Yeah, we have three rankings, but it should be five. There should be five, not three.
Okay, well, I noticed, okay, Paige is taken out, okay, so it's
Now, it should be five.
Do you have any way of forecasting who's gonna retire the next year, John?
I think, I think we're gonna lose, uh, maybe two or three guys on nights. Maybe two, anyway.
Okay.
Two of them, I'm sure, right, George?
We have one that gave us notice on the end of March, one night.
Okay, so, so whoever that person is, the, I will, well, who is that, just for?
That's Crowley.
Craig Crowley.
All right, Crowley, so Crowley leaves us, he's a custodian.
Yeah.
A nine-nine, when you, when you take a move, you bid that, then you can move the person up, and that creates another open.
Yes.
I think we talked about this last year, due to the closing Quincy Court.
Right.
Eventually.
Eventually.
We talked about this, we've been talking about it since I've been here. We're gonna lose those positions, we should, we still maintain the Quincy Court, and I was looking to leave the breakage there because hopefully, when, if, when they ever move us out of there, I'd be shocked if it's not another year or more. I, I I envision we just move someone in there that's presently working, while moving someone up.
Yeah, all those guys there are out of new.
I know that, the last two or three.
They'd be able to fill in the positions here.
But that still creates some vacancies at the bottom.
It's, no.
Yes, sure. I mean, you gotta replace Crowley, no matter what happens, because he's a higher paid custodian than, is he a senior as opposed to a
He isn't custodian.
No, he's just a custodian now.
Okay, custodian, seniors are higher than, than custodians, right? Okay, so he's, okay, so he, he may be not a good example, but we'll deal with that when he leaves, but that's you know, so we're all, we're on the same page. That's the reason for these vacancies. And I realize in the real world, we could fill them all, and eventually we might have to anyway, and we wouldn't lay anyone off, I, I, you know. But I can't tell you what's gonna happen in Quincy. About my house, that we're, it's, we're talking about it here.
We know that they're still working.
I know, they've advertised twice.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, I went to the Baudy remembrance service last week, and the judge asked me. Asking me when they're leaving there, I said, Judge, I'm at the university, we, we can stay, we can we're not, you know, those letters don't generate from us, they don't come from us, they come from the great Commonwealth. So.
Okay, well, I'll go back to what, well, Frank, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So your proposed increase is for about ten thousand dollars, but that still puts the person less than what Tara had going, based on her salary. Am I getting this right?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at what Tara's salary was, and what it was projected, and this is Margaret, who I didn't even meet, so nice to meet you, pleased to meet you. No introduction or anything. So you're Margaret, you're looking for an increase, but your, your raise is still less than Tara would have been. Am I right?
Yes.
Am I reading that right? Okay. Well, make sure I got the right information. So I can't vote if I have the right information. All right, so that makes sense. Any other vacancies, when they happen, they happen. We talked about this nonstop, I understand that.
We're gonna talk about it more.
I know, but I mean, when they happen, they happen. It's all depends on Quincy, when the court
The plumber's gone.
I, the plumber's gone, we have that. Yeah.
I was gonna announce that later in the day, but we might as well.
That's a very
Talking about personnel.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, the increase are very modest, those things go up, supplies go up, things kinda go up.
John.
Usually, we don't have the utility, we should have the utilities on there too.
It's here.
The utility.
And they're gonna go up too.
Who's that company, excuse me, who's that company you mentioned, though, you get a lot of stuff from? That company, you mentioned somebody, yeah, so they, they give you like most of your supplies and chemicals, because most towns do that. They had bid it out, they have somebody to get, and that person supplies everything, but then there's always stuff that comes up. I see the guys in my own town, they go down to Ace Eyewear, or Rockies, and they need to get, like, you know, stuff comes up, you know, so actually, you're saying, you can kind of minimize that, because the more you can put out the bids, the better off we'd be, right?
Sure, right.
Right, so you wanna do that, if you can, if you can, stuff always comes up, but, you know. That was all I had.
We try to keep it, you know, within the budget, try to.
Does that, does that go up the bid? The clean supply person, whatever, that's what we put up the bid?
Yeah, I, I believe it does, you know, I don't, I know, I think, uh, Nancy Rockwell.
That's correct, yeah.
I don't know when that contract's up.
Yes.
But they've been treating us pretty good.
Sounds good, John.
John, we, uh, you had a pipe break in Quincy Court a couple of weeks ago. At the start of the year.
Yeah.
It was cold.
Oh, yeah, and you got it up and running in the day, and I got the contractor, he was very good. And you did too. How did you come to come to him rather than I write the contract? Everyone tied up, nothing, he worked out great.
Yeah, a lot, lot.
Use some more of, I
You want me to quote him? You want me to quote what he said to me?
Sure.
He said, John, I can't get him out of the pub.
He's talking about help.
Oh.
I wanna, I wanna make a note here, not our, not our people.
It broke too late.
Well, you know, late in the day, right?
Yeah, it was about nine-thirty.
But geez, they did, they were excellent, and
Yeah.
They were great.
Yeah, that was good. Yeah, that was good.
Did the bill, did, did the bill come yet, and you send it over yet?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner, three do I do with a question? Uh, Sean, I think you mentioned that the, uh, utilities are going up, is that correct?
Absolutely, no.
Your, your budget numbers are static to FY twenty-five. For fuel, it's exactly the same as it was in FY twenty-five. And for electricity, it's the same as it was in FY twenty-five. I don't see any changes.
Oh.
In other words.
In other words, we gotta change that.
Gas, gas, fuel, and, uh, electricity are all the same.
That's why we have you guys looking alone.
That's right, that's right, that's it. It's almost over lightning, that's what it is. Yeah, you wanna bump that up.
His electricity almost six hundred and seven thousand dollars a year for all.
So the question is, are they going up, and if they are, by how much, and if they're not, can we carry these numbers, that's the question.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should at least move them up five percent or ten percent.
But this is not reflected here.
Well, if you take a look at my bill, it's way more than that. Croca, Amazon's killing us.
You're inclined to think that they need to go up, with, with all due respect, I think we need a little bit more of a, a market understanding from a vendor. For each of the three utilities, John, so electricity, natural gas, and fuel. Um, I've, uh, I've, I've reached out to a couple of other municipalities that I, I work with. And they're in multi-year agreements, so their values are already known. Uh, so feel free to check with Maureen to see if she has any information on the contracts that we buy our fuel from. In our electricity, to see if there's any projected rate increases, and, um, if there are any changes, let us know.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
John, are we still sending people to safety school? If they're still ready to.
In fact, I just, uh, confirmed that, uh, dates, uh, April fifth and April twelfth. I'm, I'm working on that, uh.
And that's quite concrete. Yep.
I think we had ten thousand for school.
Exactly.
And, uh. I'm getting a list of the guys now that, that give, to, uh, George Simmons. He does the Yankee School too.
That's good, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that particular expense is funded in John's FY twenty-five budget. Once he expends the funds on this training. They're eligible for reimbursement through a grant award that Michelle Lapidini got through Mega.
Okay, that's good. I didn't know that. But we're, we're committed to sending them to school. And they have to go, I mean, we pay it, I plus you pay them to go to school.
Why are you quiet, you know?
Well.
That's my point.
It's a good thing, it's federal funded.
Yeah.
It's, uh.
I didn't, I thought it was.
To have a mature rating, you know, for each guy, like, ten hour school. They also have other classes there, and we can wait another year to have that.
And snow removed.
Hmm.
How are we doing?
We're doing alright now.
Yeah, not as good, I mean.
I didn't do anything for the last couple of years.
I know, that's oil, that's, I understand. But man, this stuff, you know.
Well, this last song was brutal.
Ice, well, it's like rock.
Ooh, those, those are worse ones. That stuff was heavy. Heavy, I mean, heavy.
Yeah, bros quick too.
Oh, yeah.
You can get rid of it. Bro.
What?
You'll be out there working it.
Well, likely we're missing that one tomorrow.
Good, that's good news. We're done.
Subject to the, yeah, you're mental.
Pretty much.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the maintenance budget, not twenty-twenty-six?
So some adjustment on fuel, right, and electric utility, and, uh.
We'll get back to you, so, yeah, fuel.
Yeah.
The utilities.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, we're good seeing you guys.
One more thing, I'm sorry.
I probably spoke to you.
We have.
And we may, we probably.
Yeah, we, when I first.
Okay, no, I, I.
On the personnel sheet. Night roving fool, and we know that, we're eliminating that position.
Yes.
We eliminated it last year, or we didn't fill it last year, but we left the name in there, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want, we're just gonna eliminate the money and leave the name, or we're gonna eliminate the name too? Not a person's name.
I'll eliminate the name and leave the money.
You will, uh, you won't see that.
That's not gonna happen.
That's an FY twenty-three expense.
Yeah.
Huh? That's an FY twenty-three, by the way, that'll go away.
Okay, alright, okay, it'll go away on its own. Okay. Okay, last call. Okay, motion taken under advisement.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Call anytime, any questions. We'll call you.
Any information, uh, actually, I don't know, thank you, thank you, sir.
Always good to see you, sir.
Alright.
Somebody working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
See you, man, thank you.
John, take care, make sure to see you.
Good to see you.
On the regular agenda, thank you, John.
Take care, John, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, we're back on the regular agenda. Item number six, Commissioner. Item number six is public comment. Each week at our meeting, we have a section for public comment. Anyone in Zoom land or in present. Would like to come in and have any public comment, now, now is the time. Director Bronin, have you had any comment?
Not this week, mister.
Okay. Number seven, all business. I have none. Number eight, personnel matter for consideration. We have three. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, move forward. At Norfolk County Agricultural High School, the move for the approval of notice of extension employment for William Brady at Wofford. As a sub-instructor at the Ray State effective date two twenty twenty-five, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next, notice of resignation.
Uh, just moves to new approval of the notice of resignation for Clifford Lovelace of Naftian. As a former plumber, effective date two twenty-one twenty-five, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Four, regional services.
I move approval of the notice of change hours of Christopher Goldsmith of Newton, Mass. As RSDP recruiter coordinator at the Ray State effective date two nineteen twenty-five, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'll take one.
That's it. Two to zero, okay.
So those are all set.
Number nine, payroll and expense one.
Mr. Chairman, I move the following warrant list. Number one, twenty-five dash thirty-three payroll accounting, move approval of one hundred forty-three thousand. Six hundred thirty dollars, sixty-eight cents, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Second, I move approval of twenty-five dash thirty-three subsection seventeen payroll to school. I move approval of some four hundred twenty thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars, twelve cents, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Third, uh, I move approval of O-two dash O-three twenty-five expensive accounting. Some of twelve thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars, thirty-six cents, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
What?
Fourth.
I move the two bond issues. First one, twenty-five dash five, bond issue interest, move approval of seventeen thousand. One hundred twenty-eight dollars, thirteen cents, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And finally, move approval of twenty-five dash four, bond issue interest, move approval of some hundred twenty-seven thousand. Three hundred sixty-five dollars, sixty-two cents, so move.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes that.
Report on the American Rescue Plan Act.
Hold on.
Director Bronin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, briefly, uh, very briefly. The commissioners, uh, may be aware that we are moving towards developing a new tool within the ARPA portal to establish a formal. Uh, trail of transfer requests. Um, late last week, we had a multi-county meeting and presentation of this tool that was. Sponsored and designed by Norfolk County was advanced to the other three counties. All three, um. Have, have expressed an interest in buying into the tool for their use. I spoke with our coordinator, Sean Bodrick, yesterday, and he is working up. Uh, revised bill to allow for the impact of that cost to be shared between the four counties, which again is good value for us. As soon as the final elements of that, uh, tool are ready, we will begin to see at least the first transfer, which I think we're killing. Be the ton of dope. Uh, so now, that is all I have. Uh, one more thing, I intend to notify, um, our assistant, ARPA coordinator, Mr. Galvin. Of the role to be our front person on monitoring, um, activities within the ARPA awards with the CLA contact. Uh, Andrew Corbin, who's been doing all the, uh, monitoring. So those two will be our frontline coordinators for all ARPA monitoring going forward. They'll report to us and CLA respectively. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of county director? Number eleven, upper transfer requests, move none?
Not this week, mister.
Okay, thank you. Number twelve, Maureen, please. Report for the procurement department on bid openings and contractual awards.
Yes, sir.
We have one or two?
We have one lease here today.
Or, what's first?
Commissioner Stady has the package.
Okay, Green Master.
Green?
Device from Carl Minor. Not sure what this is.
You know? No, that's not, yeah, that's not.
Okay. Um, so he's looking to purchase very expensive lawnmower, to summarize, and they will. Finance it through PNC, uh, for a five-year lease.
Okay, this is how we traditionally buy a lawnmower?
Yes, and we will be having another one of these soon with more equipment, so this, you'll see.
Are we taking this under advisement, or are we going forward today? Is there any reason not to, John?
No, the contract's been selected and is ready for award, is that correct, Maureen?
Correct, the money's there.
Okay, the motion.
We gotta have our lawnmowers working. Okay, so that's, that's all, that's one of the same.
Well, that's Commissioner Stady, so you can make a motion.
You can make a motion. Thank you. So I move the, uh.
Thank you.
Approval of a quote of turf rights. Lease finance be PNC bank. And for quotes submitted, release for Green Master, Turf Tri-Flex Hybrid three, two, oh, lawnmower, for five years. In accordance with the Mass State contract, F A H C one sixteen pricing, a yearly pricing of ten thousand three hundred. Total lease fifty-one thousand five hundred, so move.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
There's a motion. I'm gonna get a little on, thank you.
The only question I had before you go, so it says pages assigned in this one where three commissioners decide.
Right.
But I noticed some of these pages only require less signatures, so it'd be chairman only?
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't wanna leave it outside, so.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Maureen?
That is all for now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, report of the county director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few items, um, wanna alert, um. As we approach the end of February, it is the time Robert Pearson will be retiring. His last day is February twenty-eighth. Um, we'll be honoring Robert with the office party next Wednesday. He'll be before you for his exit, uh, discussion as well. Uh, my next announcement is for the general benefit, including eventually, uh, maintenance, while giving more direction on by ear from. The, uh, Supreme, uh, Superior Court person, uh, trial court, uh, security personnel, the Karen Re trial is again expected to, um. Start again on or about April first. Um, they are awaiting directions on the court's buffer zone as before, but it's likely. Another buffer zone will be put in place, which will impact parking behind the registry deeds. They're also expecting a large juror pool to be solicited for this trial, as many as two hundred a day for five days. Um, again, a tremendous amount of people coming in and out of that building for a relatively short period of time is impactful. Uh, you add in the parking, we could be looking at something that require a lot of patience. Uh, more on this later, but I wanna let people know, I heard from the trial courts this week. Uh, and I will share with more information regarding the logistics with, uh, our maintenance division shortly before the event, uh, begins on or about April first. Uh, for the commissioners' information, next week, uh, your budget schedule continues. You'll have three more budgets before you. The registry deeds, engineering, and the treasury matters. Speaking of the budget, I just wanted to announce that pursuant to statute, um. The, uh, posting, public posting of public hearing for this, uh, FY twenty-six budget proposal has been placed in the Patriot ledger. Um, the public hearing will be March twelfth, twenty twenty-five at one P M, time is required for the law. Uh, Commissioner Shade, mostly for your benefit, because I know Commissioner Stady is fully aware. Um, we have been in touch with a vendor who, uh, works on state grants to, uh, help with, uh, charging stations. Um, the name of the firm is Pork Energy. Um, the president of that firm is looking to come before the commissioners next, um, Wednesday, if your permit will place him on the agenda. So that they can, uh, share their, um, their plan, their project, as they have with Commissioner Stady and I, with. With this board, and it's full, to get your agreement on proceeding with their scope of work and their intentions to.
Now, what, what do they do, what do they do for us, I'm not gonna be.
So they're gonna, they're gonna, um, go up to, on our behalf, examine our electricity, uh, records, uh, for sites that you'll determine. And then evaluate, uh, the viability of placing electric vehicle charging stations at those locations.
Okay.
Uh, to date, the commissioners have provided approval for one site, that is the site behind the registry deeds. Uh, this is a grant program through the state. I wanna compliment Commissioner Stady, who's been very, um. Steadfast on this, has been helpful getting this particular vendor in front of us, and they would like to appear next Wednesday.
Okay, great.
It would be a good thing, um. My understanding is, there's no cost, no cost. It's to a grant. And my understanding too is that it could possibly generate revenue costs. It's kind of a win-win. Um, the only fear I have is that we don't wanna delay too much because of federal funds being cut back in this area, but we'll do a good question.
Well, I think. It's, and there's no questions coming.
Yeah.
Did I tell you last week, and, uh. At the Alx Club in Quincy, which has its own function hall, they put in six, twelve units, two, six.
These guys.
They look like pumps.
These guys work with Quincy.
They're already working.
They did city Quincy.
Yeah, okay, so, it was the first time I've ever seen them.
Yeah.
And I, I noticed when there's a function, they're always in use. Also noticed when there isn't a function. The location of buildings in, in a, in a high residential, high-rise neighborhood, and people are coming over, using it at night at the air expense.
Right.
So I think it's a, I think it's a win-win.
Well, it is.
And you're helping people out, because.
Right, it's, it's good, it's gonna be good.
I think there's gotta be a shortage in them now.
What, okay, ask politely, what's next week's schedule look off here? We have, what budgets are coming in?
Uh, excuse me, again, registry deeds.
Right.
Engineering and treasury.
Treasury, and we have the, uh, gathering for Robert?
Yes, sir.
Is that before or after a meeting?
Uh, we haven't determined, yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna be running a little bit tight. I have an, an engagement at the local, again.
Okay.
Speaking at.
Give a preference?
So probably, I'm gonna be like, coming in around quarter one. Um, I didn't wanna miss Robert's thing, but I may, you know, um.
Uh, so if we move things earlier, that might work?
No, if we could do it like later, great. Gas, that is thing. Like, what do you mean move?
Well, the scheduled, um, commissioners' meetings usually at one o'clock, you have the event prior to that.
Right.
So if we move the commissioners' meeting, you're saying to two, that might work better?
Oh, okay, well, could you do that? Yeah, that'd be great. Let's start with me at two o'clock.
Alright, I'll, I'll secure the, the time with the commissioner. All right, I'll, I'll secure the timing with the commissioner.
Cause you wanna have some time for Robert and people to, yeah, all that information.
All right.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
If you don't want, if you don't, if you don't wanna crowd the agenda and push them off for another week, that's okay, then.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, maybe put them off for a week.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, very good.
All right. Um, all right. Any other? Before we get on?
That's all I have.
The proxy director.
Also, um, next item, um, our building management system project, um, is beginning this week at, at District Court. Uh, the firm from automated building systems, Jacob Rivera, has reached out to Mr. McGowan, who was our, uh, facility coordinator. Um, he wants to start to lay down some issues which will not be impactful to, um, day-to-day operations this Friday, this Thursday and Friday, I spoke to John this morning, uh, we're still trying to coordinate the Cory checks for the construction to, um, allow them full access to the facility, so that, uh, that will happen shortly after this week, but I just wanna let the commissioners know that project, by the way, it's expected to go in at least a couple of months, um, and of course, we'll be working with the courts during this process to make sure it's not impactful. It's a very, very meaningful, uh, project, I, I wanted to alert the commissioners that, you know, when, um, when you prepare budgets, you, you, you you're instinctively always looking to look back what we did last year versus what we tend to do next year, and try to find the money for any increases, but occasionally, it's important that you look at ways to save money, uh, this project was always intended to be a capital project that would yield tremendous operational savings, um, in this case, we spend nearly a million dollars a year across the board with all our utility costs, between electricity, natural gas, and so forth, um, after speaking with this vendor, and we're only talking one building right now, he said, he said, the minimal amount you can expect to save annually on your utilities is about twenty-five percent, it can go higher. Um, so at a base rate, in, in debt of District Court, it's about ninety-seven thousand dollars a year, that's a, that's a chunk of money. And as we find that capacity to expand this tool into all our buildings, maybe you can quickly see the multiplier effect of savings, and that's every year that we will be saving on, on, uh, utilities going forward, it's a tremendous tool, I look forward to, uh, at least this initial deployment and the savings coming down the road, but I think it was a smart move by the commissioners to invest the ARPA money on that for FY twenty-five. As Commissioner, uh, Shay indicated, we receive the resignation of our assistant, uh, golf director, golf pro Dana, uh, he is resigning effective March seventh. We'll work with Carl, obviously, to expedite the posting, uh, get the job description finalized and up without delay. Uh, the plumber, as we, as you voted earlier, um, is leaving effective, uh, two twenty-one, the position has been posted, it's on our website, another job, um, search areas that we commonly use, will bring forth candidates without delay. And finally, I just wanna let the commissioners know, I spoke to with Renee Davis from C-Biz, formerly Powers and Sullivan, our FY twenty-four audit will commence next week. Um, the two principals will be contacting Joe Diori at the treasurer's office to begin review of, uh, financial statements. Um, this will be followed up by visits by this, uh, team and others to the registry deeds, Los Recreational Facility, and the Agricultural School. More on that later, but I'm expecting the visits to be sometime in March, possibly around March tenth, we go. Uh, and that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, Director? Any further questions? Answer them as we go along. Okay, seen none, number fourteen, emergency items, topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Uh, I have none, other than the comment that, uh, we're in two budgets, we did three today. We're taking them under advisement, uh. I like to think of the budget document as a living, breathing thing. And, uh, we work on it, and, uh, everything's on the table, so to speak, so, uh, we'll go from there. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
All right, I move we adjourn at, at two fifty.